Hello Helena and welcome to Business Unusual Virtual Town Hall. I'm excited, we have Joseph Daly with us. And several others. So, take it away Joseph.
Hey, we're so excited tonight to join you via Facebook Live. So you can be in the safety of your home to get to know your Helena City Council candidates for this upcoming election. As the faces start popping on, you guys come on and open up your video there and join us in. We're going to take just a minute and I want to give everyone an opportunity to introduce themselves to the city. I think it's so great that we're able to join virtually. Thank you Jana May for putting this on and thank you City of Helena for coming and watching and trusting us to help you get to know your candidates a little bit better so that you can make an informed decision as you vote on August 25th. So we're so excited. We're going to kick it off tonight with Lee Holsey. Lee, if you'll just, you've got 60 seconds. If you'll just give us a quick introduction and tell us a little bit about yourself.
I'm Lee Holsey. I am a nearly 21-year resident of Helena. Been married for 23 years. I have three kids. My two oldest ones have graduated from Helena High School and baby girl is still a student here in the schools. I have been on City Council for three term and I love it here. So it's a, it's a great city and I'm, I've enjoyed serving this city and being a part of it.
Super. Thank you so much for sharing. Scott Newman, we're headed to you next. You've got 60 seconds.
Hello, I'm Scott Newman, running for City Council Place One. Been married for 12 years. Been in the city of Helena for six years. My, I have 11-year-old going into the middle school Friday and working in automotive. I am currently the Director of the Farmers Market in Helena and I'm also currently the President of the Buck Creek Festival. Thank you.
Super. Chris Van Cleve, you're up, 60 seconds.
Hey, I'm Chris Van Cleve, running for Helena City Council Place Two. Moved to Helena about 15 years ago. Moved to Birmingham in 2000 and about five years later, we settled Helena. And I'll tell you, I love this town, love serving in this town. I've been the Chairman of the Beautification Board now. This is my second, the end of my second term as Chairman. You know, during that time, we resurrected the basket planting program. We changed the entire landscape of Old Town and it's just been a lot of fun to gather the folks around us and plant and increase the quality of life here in Helena. I am a 28-year bank operations veteran, serving at one of the nation's largest financial institutions where we operated efficiencies over the years, saving the bank millions of dollars along the way. So I'm getting the yellow card, so I'll be quiet now.
All right. Thank you, Chris. Hey, we're going to head over to Dominga Gardner. You're up next, running for Place Two against Chris. Go ahead.
Okay. Hi, everybody. I'm Dominga Gardner, running for Helena City Council Place Two. I'm not going to bore you with my bio, but I just wanted to tell you about a lesson that I learned when I was 14 years old. I loved sports and I played sports all the time and I was on the varsity volleyball team. And when the, we were getting slaughtered at a basketball volleyball game at one time and then the coach looked at me and said, who can I get to fill in the gaps? Well, I looked down the line and I called everyone, everyone's name. And after the game, the coach said, Dominga, I'm disappointed in you. And I was like, why? And she said, well, you didn't, you called everybody's name but your own. And that stuck with me till this day. And what I'm here to do, Helena, is to fill in the gaps. And so never will I say someone else could do something without I can do it. So I'm here, Helena, to let you know that I will fill in the gaps as your next Councilwoman. Thank you.
I love that story. Thank you Dominga. Hey, we're headed over to Laura Joseph, who's running for Place Four. Laura, 60 seconds.
All right. Thanks so much for having me here. My name's Laura Joseph. I'm running for reelection. I just, I'm finishing up my first term on City Council in Place Four. My husband TJ and I have two children, Anna Kate, who's 13, she's going to be in the eighth grade, and John Marshall, who is nine, and he'll be in the fourth grade. We live in Oka Haba. I'm the liaison to the Library Board and the Beautification Board and I absolutely love it. I'm also Vice Chairman of Helena's Buck Creek Festival and I sit on several other boards, including the Leadership Shelby County Board and Big Brothers Big Sisters of Shelby County.
All right, Laura. Thank you so much for sharing. We're headed over to Ms. Tangie Edwards. You've got 60 seconds. Tell us about yourself. Oh, you're muted Tangie.
There we go.
There we go.
Hello Helena. Hello Jana. Hello Joseph. Hi. I'm Tangie Edwards and I'm so excited to be here. I am the voice for the people. I really desire to serve Helena. I am a woman who's married to a vet, which is David Williams, who's my hubby. And I am just here for the people. Very simple. Just want to serve my people. I'm a native of Helena and look forward to being a part of Helena City Council with this awesome team.
Super. Thank you Tangie. All right. Well, we're going to head into some questions this evening, like we discussed beforehand. And just so the consumers know, tonight, we're giving each candidate two minutes apiece. Is that right, Jana May? Two minutes apiece to answer these questions. So we're going to, I said consumers, and I meant constituents just a minute ago. Listen to me trying to sell real estate. Constituents, all the constituents of Helena. So we're going to give each candidate two minutes apiece to answer. And the way we've done it tonight is I'm going to ask a question. Whoever would like to answer will just kind of give me a wave and we'll let you take it over. Just wait till like, hold on you and we'll get you going, okay? All right. So the first question we have for tonight that's been submitted is in four years, when your term has ended, what will you say has been your greatest achievement on City Council? And Helena already has a balanced budget, so how will you pay for that? Your greatest achievement and how we're going to pay for it? Well, all right, Chris, go ahead.
You know, I hope to, at the end of my four, my first four-year term as a Helena City Councilman, is to say that we examined the city's infrastructure and that we looked at staffing, not only in City Hall, but in our police department, our fire department, and that we made some decisions as to whether or not we're appropriately staffed in those areas. And our, you know, not only looking at appropriate staffing, but are we paying people an appropriate wage for the work that they perform? Now, don't think, to my knowledge, and I've been attending council meetings for years, and to my knowledge, these comprehensive reviews have never been done. So that is one of the things that I'm going to push for in my first few days in office, is to get that underway. And hopefully, at the end of my first term, that we will have made some incredible progress as far as our ratios for police officers' population, as well as fire protection as well, and our other city services that we provide, public works and some of the other areas, do we have appropriate staffing to meet the city's needs? That's very important to me.
All right. Would anyone else like to jump on? Lee, go right ahead, Lee. Thank you, Chris.
Um, yeah, I think ultimately, anytime we take a job, our goal is to leave it better than we found it, right? I think collectively, anybody would hopefully go into a job with that intention. Ultimately, I honestly believe a lot of the same things that Chris mentioned. One of the things that I have put out there is I do think that we are understaffed in every single area of our city. And I think that that's something that we have to address. The, the great thing is, is that we have been working on more fiscal security and stability through saving resources. And now, because we were, we were responsible in that way, we can actually start tackling some of those issues. I actually was meeting with our city clerk today regarding those exact things as we're just preparing to start doing the budget in a couple of weeks. And I think that that's a critical area. A lot of times, the biggest obstacles that we face in the city are resources and then staffing. I think those are two of our biggest problems that would, if we could tackle those progressively and effectively, would fix a lot of the overall concerns that we have or that I hear, and I'm sure my fellow council members hear consistently, and that is that the roads are an issue, our infrastructure is an issue, the schools are an issue. And I think some of that starts with staffing, but it also is something that we have to begin to partner differently with. So just, there's so many things we could tackle with this question, right? But one of the things I would love to see us do is also help our schools. We've done an excellent job doing, I think, right by the school to set it up to be a great athletic location, which is good because people come into town and they want to, they want to be there. But I think now we can take those same resources and allocate them towards capital improvement project for the schools. So there you go, my time's up.
All right. Super. Anyone else want to jump in on that question? Go ahead, Laura.
Yeah, um, not probably immediately, but before the next four years are over, I would love to say that we've been able to break ground on a new library and cultural arts center for the city of Helena that would allow our police to move over to the existing library structure and give them the room that they need. We're going to have, you know, we know four more officers this next year and, you know, if we are going to reach those staffing goals, we're going to have to have desks to put them. And I would love for our library to be built close to the schools to enhance connectivity as well, provide resources for home-based businesses and, and others, maybe even a maker space, if we can, if we can do that. And I would love for us to, you know, seek out grants to help with the funding of that. And also, you know, maybe in a few years, if we are still, you know, in a, in a financial position to be able to do that, maybe look at doing a bond or something, just so that we can get the ball rolling because we know it's a future need. And I see no reason for us to, to wait when we know this is something that we're going to have to tackle.
Thank you, Laura. Anyone else want to jump in on that? Tangie, Dominga, Scott? Tangie, go right ahead.
All right. The question is, what would I like to say that I come at the end of four years? Me, I just want, I want, I would like to say I have worked hard and I served people and all communities feel included, that the businesses felt included, that the community felt everybody was on, included. So I really want to feel that I really was, that I was a voice, that I listened to the people and I at least tried to present what the city as a whole, not just the typical community, really would want. That's, that's, I just want to be a voice of people. And I think that if I go and I just serve the people, I will feel I did a great job for four years.
Thank you Tangie. Anyone else want to add on that one?
I'll just go ahead and add.
All right.
Well, next four years, as a Councilwoman, what I would like to, what I would like definitely is to, at the end of the four years, like as many, bringing the community together, definitely communicating more with the community at, you know, at all, at all ways via social media, you know, telephone calls, text messages, emails, newsletters, just to get the word out because everybody's not on social media. Everybody doesn't read the newspaper, but just being able to get the message out at any means necessary to what the city is doing so that everyone will be aware. And also adding diversity. We have some different nationalities in the community, being able to converse with them, being able to translate the information to them because some of them is not, English is not their first language. So being able to translate that type of information, being transparent with the community. I think it will be, go a long way for those that are wanting to know what's going on in the city because a lot of times you have the city council meetings and most of the time, the residents don't actually know. So I think we just, just bringing the community together by any means necessary and adding that different, those different cultural groups and being inclusive, as Tangie is saying, just trying to get everybody involved. And I would like to see a diversity board that does include all walks of life so that we can get, offer, they can give us different perspectives of what they're, what they think on the different issues and concerns of Helena. Thank you, Jana.
Thank you Dominga. All right. Anyone else want to add?
Go ahead and say something in short. I think that we need to grow and, and not just business growth or, or building growth. We need to grow as a community. We need to make sure that we don't leave our kids behind. We need to make sure that we grow with the future and what's coming up in the next 10 years. Because if we don't grow, then again, our children are left behind. We need to make sure the businesses are, are promoted. So I'll go ahead and leave that there and, and we'll wait for the next questions.
All right. Well, as we continue to talk about growth and the city, name an area where you believe Helena is weak or we, where anybody knows it's weak. And how would you change it? How would you fund that change? All right. Go right ahead, Scott.
I think one of the areas that we are weak, again, are, I don't know, you know, you drive down 52 and I think something that I would do is I know the Beautification Board works on, you know, beautifying Helena, but if you go down 52 towards Shades Crest, maybe we need to do like an adopted highway. Maybe we need, and to me, that's, that's free. We need to get people together and, and clean up. I know we have folks on, on the city that do that, but we need to pitch in. Also pitch in by not throwing it out. But we need to help clean up and do like an adopt a highway or something like that. I also think where we are weak is, again, the businesses. We need to make sure that we promote and promote ourselves and promote that we're family and that Helena is where it is.
Thank you, Scott. Lee, you raised your hand.
Yes. I'm sorry, I raised it early. I thought you-
No, that's okay.
I apologize.
I knew where I was going next.
All right. So ultimately, I actually think an area that we are, I guess, do some improvement in is our strategy for growth. I actually think that, and I've mentioned this before, we have had this mindset of grow, grow, grow. And that has been something that has served us well. However, I think it's time for us to revisit that and, and look at that from a different angle. I've mentioned, you know, ways that we can do that through road connectivity and things like that. But one of the things that I think would be critical in that is going forward, that we partner with our developers in a very different capacity. Years ago, you know, development was included, there was an inclusiveness to it in the sense that the developers brought something to the table for the community. And that hasn't been happening for a long time. And I think it's time for that to go. I think it's time for us to partner with developers. We want them here. We need them here. They want to be here. But there are ways that we can do that going forward that ask or require them to bring something to the table that adds value for our citizens and not just the neighborhood that they're building in. We did this specifically with US Steel when we were doing the Hillsborough Development and they brought a road. And now you see the fruition of a park. And I think partnering in those ways are ways that we can actually continue to add to the vitality and the community here. And really stress, hey, you know, what can you guys bring to the table? We want you here too. But what can you bring to the table? And I think that's an area specifically that we need to address and can address better. I'm confident in the ability to do that. And I feel like I'm like ready to go. And we've actually already started doing some of that. How Laura brought a subdivision regulation, correct me if I'm wrong, Laura, some changes to that. So we're already starting that process, but it's been an area that needed some change. And I'm excited for us to tackle it.
All right, Chris, I think I saw your hand go up. You've got two minutes.
Well, you know, I just kind of want to piggyback on what Lee was saying. I think we need a, a very close look and probably a very painful look at our planning and zoning law, uh, rules. And, you know, I think those were put in place during the time when those rules were what we needed for that period of time. And now we've come a long way down the pipe. And so I think we need to make some adjustments there as, as folks come in and want to, want to partner with the city and develop Helena. We need to be a partner at the table in a very proactive way. I think we've been in a very reactive mode in the city for many years and we just kind of react anytime somebody shows up and wants to build something. And we don't, we don't, we haven't really paid a lot of attention to our comprehensive plan. Not that that is something we have to stick to. It is just merely a roadmap for us to follow, but I think it needs to be updated. And that's one of the things that I'll work with the council and the new mayor to accomplish.
All right. Thank you, Chris. Tangie, I saw your hand go up. Did you like, would you like to follow?
I would like to follow up. Um, I feel that area that we're, we're into communication and that couple lot of grounds, a different territory. Number one, being communication between distance and the community. So that's why I'm leaving the community program, communication between, with technology. Yes, with technology as well, as with, make sure they make sure we have a good community on our side.
Tangie. Yeah, Tangie, we're having a hard time hearing you.
Hold on one second.
Do you want to try again?
How about now? Can you hear me? Okay. Um, thank you. Thank you. All right. So I believe that we need communication. And in that couple lot areas, a lot of different aspects. Number one, like community, community, that's why I put community program, I think, to create opportunities for the community, to communicate with each other. Our technologies is behind. I think we need to update on our technology and so that people can connect throughout in the world, virtually. I feel there's a communication with our businesses that are in Helena, with the parents as well as with, it's a lot of areas of communication that needs to be improved. I feel now we're from being a small knit group where people provide to now with, is bigger see that we don't know what's going on, we don't know who's who, don't know the council. So communication be an area of opportunity for Helena to improve.
All right. Thank you Tangie. Anyone else want to add on to that? Laura, go right ahead.
Yes. One of the things that I would love to see us begin to do is do strategic planning by department. Our comprehensive plan is a fantastic roadmap for the future growth and, you know, of the city. But I would like to see each of our city departments, you know, take a really close look at strategic planning and, you know, the, for example, the lifespan of the, the vehicles and equipment that they use, or set goals and, you know, map out a way to achieve them so that we can make sure that we've got a plan to address the needs of the community of now and also the community of the future. And hopefully, you know, we can go into things with a little bit more of a strategic mindset as far as, you know, what, what we're able to do and, you know, maybe accomplish some goals that, that we hadn't thought of before.
All right. Thank you, Laura. Anybody else?
Um, I think I already said it. My biggest thing is communication. And I'm going to piggyback on Laura. I definitely think the strategic plans is the way to go, being able to plan, plan it out. You know, what are the needs of the city? What are the needs of the departments? And you also have those want, won'ts, but definitely the needs outweigh the wants. So.
All right. Anybody else on that one? Helena's weaknesses. Anything else? All right. We're going to move on then. The next question I've got is the city council is mostly responsible for the budget and laws. What is one law you'd change in the next four years? Laura said, whoa. Lee, go right ahead. I saw that hand fly up.
To be honest, a lot of times where we, when we look at stuff like that, we're looking at stuff that is, we've either noticed it's problematic or it's being brought to our attention by the public. Hey, this is an issue. And I would typically say right now, nothing. However, I, I've actually noticed a few things lately and had a few just expressions of concern about basically nuisances, lack of a better word. And I actually went and got our, I just went and printed a copy today of that ordinance to look at it and make sure it's something we don't need to address. It may be fine. It may not be. It may need to have something just kind of tackled on it. But ultimately, I think that, I don't know that there's a specific law right now that is on the books that needs to be addressed. I think those are done case by case when we become aware of something or, like I said already, someone points something out to us directly. And I think, I think that very easily, we would be proactive about that. You know, I mean, one of the things that we've always done and I, I will continue to do is listen to what the residents say, take those things into consideration, evaluate them and see if we can change them and, and implement something that's positive for the residents. So there's not a specific one right now that I think we need to change, but I am currently reviewing our, our public nuisance ordinance just to, to see if there is something that needs to be addressed with the council.
All right. Thank you, Lee. Dominga, go right ahead.
Um, I guess one of the ones I would like to look at is more so the parking we have in the neighborhoods. I know some, there is an ordinance to not park on the sidewalk, but sometimes there is a reason why parking on the sidewalk or of that matter. But I know here recently, there have been some issues. Some of my friends have been complaining about it, definitely about the parking ordinance in the neighborhoods. I know, I live in Oka Haba, there is definitely some houses with, you know, more cars than others. So just being able to reevaluate the parking ordinance.
All right. Thank you Dominga. Anyone else? Go ahead, Laura.
Oh, good. I'm not muted. Um, it's not anything that we currently have right now, but I would really like for us to take another look at an anti-tethering law. Several other municipalities in the Birmingham area have made some great strides recently in the protection of animals. And, you know, we've got, we've got two dogs that were foster fails from two-by-two rescue. And I know that that, that's a problem that we have in Helena. It's not anything that, you know, really gets talked about a lot, but I feel like that's one way that, you know, we can, we can protect the least of these.
All right. Thank you, Laura. Anyone else want to tag on? If not, that's okay. We will move on to the next question. It says Helena has one of the lowest property taxes for a city of its size. If the people wanted to vote to raise their property tax, would you support and why? Go ahead, Lee. Thought she was first. Go ahead.
Do you want to go first?
So you go right ahead.
Um, I actually agree. Our millage is extremely low and I think there's probably a fair amount of misunderstanding about how that works. And I say that because I've had numerous conversations for the last few years with residents asking about this and not kind of understanding it. Our mill, our millage is five mil, which essentially, I'm going to break it down really fast, equates to $50 per $100,000 of assessed house value. So if your house, its assessed value is $200,000, you're paying $100 a year to Helena for fire, police, streets, all of the city services that you utilize. That's a deal if I ever heard of one. However, the thing that I love about this is if it is something the citizens want, I absolutely support that. I personally support the idea of putting it to a vote. It's important for people to understand that your city council does not make that decision. It is a decision that the voters make. So if the property taxes-
It is a decision that the voters make. So if the property taxes increased, it would be because the citizens of Helena voted to do so and not your mayor, not your council members. Strictly the us, the people, um, that make up this amazing city. But I'm absolutely 100% in favor of putting that to a vote, um, for the people. I've actually discussed it numerous times. Um, at the city council, pre-council meetings, I, I have very much have been an advocate for putting it before the people. Um, so yeah, I'm, I'm good. You can have those 30 seconds, Chris. I donate them to you. I don't think I can do that.
Yeah, yeah. Well, everything she said, plus, um, I, I'm totally in favor of allowing the people of this town to decide whether or not we would raise our millage. That money would be used to fund vital city services. And, uh, I'm all for that. You know, uh, we live in an area, just like we say, we have, we enjoy the lowest property tax rate, uh, probably in the state, if I'm not mistaken. And, uh, you know, it's uh, it's, it's time we put that before the people and it's come up in council. I've been sitting in council meetings for years and it has come before the council multiple times. And for whatever reason, it just kind of got set aside. So I, I, it's time to act. And, and if the people vote no, then it, but we vote no and we move on with what we have to work with. But I think it's time to put it forward and allow the people to decide.
Thank you, Chris. Anyone else want to tag on to that question? Alrighty. Oh, there's Tangi. She made it back. Did you want to tag on that questionnaire about property taxes? Don't know if you could hear the conversation.
Moment. I just, uh, hopefully you can see me as well. I'm a big advocate of, um, making sure that we have the information for the make informed vision and bringing it before the people. I think what we should do is, I think that we should, um, do our diligent and research matter pros and cons and then present information to the public and allow the public to decide on what they feel is best for, um, us as a whole. So I'm just a kid of informers and informed vision.
Perfect. Thank you, Tangi. All right. Anyone else? All right. Last question that I have, and then we'll go to some of the questions from online that Janamay has been compiling over there. Uh, council members are public servants. Oh, I'm sorry. I've got two more for you. Don't I? Sorry about that. I'm going to go back to the one before. A council person's got to be a team player. Tell me of a time you had to compromise your vision to get something done in a group. All right, Scott, go right ahead.
Well, I, I can use that, uh, for both the farmer's market and Buck Creek Festival. Uh, for the farmer's market, I have wanted to make a decision on, on what we should do on, you know, how many farmers we have, uh, if I should duplicate some of the vendors we have. And I put my feelings aside to make the market better to what it is right now. Uh, there were some things that I would have done that at the time I didn't know was going to be wrong for it. And I am glad that I made the decision not to use my idea. Uh, Buck Creek Festival, uh, there's been, uh, you know, with the, with the virus, we've been debating, do we postpone it or do we cancel it? Or do we wait till May, May of next year? Well, again, I was voted wrong and I'm very glad that I was voted wrong because hopefully in October, if everything goes well, we will have it. Um, but we will have to come together and find out again. Uh, but there's, even at work, I have that.
All right. Thank you, Scott. Chris, I saw your hand go up. You'd like to follow up?
Well, yeah, most of my experience in this realm, uh, is in the corporate world and where we manage, uh, projects with multimillion dollar budgets and that sort of thing. And, you know, uh, we always have the next big idea. And a lot of times people come in, they've got a big idea and, and we've got to vet that to make sure that's the right thing for our customers and our shareholders, ultimately everything. You know, sometimes my big idea turns out not to be such a big idea. Because once we get to the table and we start talking about it collectively as a group, uh, we figure out that, that, that may not be the best thing. And you know what? You've got to be big enough. I've got to be big enough to be able to say, you know what? You're right. And be able to come to a consensus and move forward. And, you know, in that world, I move the bank forward. In this world, we're going to be moving the city forward. And, um, you know, I'm ready to do that today. So.
Thank you, Chris. Anyone else? Lee Holsey, go right ahead.
Hey, so, um, yeah, I, I actually think that this is a great question and I think that it is important to be a team player. Um, I will say too, I also think that there are times that you need to be able to be competent, stand in your ground and, and having a different opinion and that's okay. Um, the great thing is, is I've worked numerous councils at this point and there's not ever been a situation that wasn't resolved. Um, it didn't just disappear because we couldn't figure it out. Um, so for years now, I've been participating in those meetings doing, um, as for a specific example, um, there was a lot of differing opinions and negotiations that had to take place when we were doing the initial build outs for, um, the funding of the high school athletic facilities, specifically the field house and the training, um, like the equipment usage and the flooring and all of those things were very expensive. And budget came in up here and it was our job to wrestle out what was going to go and what was going to stay. Those were very different opinions. Um, and we worked through that. We've always worked through, like I said, every situation, um, that we've ever faced to resolve issues. Um, sometimes it was compromised. Sometimes someone got what they wanted and the rest of us just were like, okay. You know, the dog in the fight, it, it, it's different each time and it's different for each person. Um, and, uh, I mean, I'll be a team player. I've been a team player numerous times, but I've also stood on, um, on my own before. And I'm comfortable doing both. I'm absolutely comfortable doing both.
All right. Thank you, Lee. Anyone else? All right, Tangi, go right ahead.
All right, I'm gonna get this before the other. Um, well, I, I'm gonna, Mike is going to do this question that we always have the right and I'm the person that if I'm wrong, I'm the person who's wrong idea. But I also, I, I do believe in, once in, I'm reading, making informed decisions. Research mad on different perspectives, trying to get the information that you need in order to make an informed vision. So when I'm afraid of decision that I made out great and the majority think that, oh, this is so late, I will go, my job as a servant of the public is to put a opinion on her opinion. And that I'll be open to, um, serving the capacity that majority of the public represents with fur.
All right. Thank you, Tangi. Dominga, go right ahead.
All right. Well, I'm definitely a team player. Um, it's all about teamwork with me. Um, I manage a team at work and I manage, uh, my church trust, the trustee. I'm the chairperson of our, uh, trustee board. So it's definitely, I value everyone's opinion and, um, I, you know, I like to look at things as, um, even though if you're the leader, uh, I never, um, sometimes you do have to make those, uh, uh, instant decisions to just move things along, but I definitely value everyone's opinion. I want to get everyone's input and let's talk about it because at the end of the day, my answer is not correct. Uh, and there's no way, there's no wrong way of doing one thing. Or no, just one right way, I'm sorry, of doing one thing. There's always something, uh, another way to do things, um, just thinking outside the box. So I do value everyone's opinion and sure, we might not all get our way, but at the end of the day, we talk about it and no one goes home mad. Uh, because we, um, you know, we respect each other and we know that we're just trying to make the best decision. And, uh, that's what I would do as a city councilwoman is just, um, definitely research the issues and concerns and be able, you know, talk with everybody on the board, um, to, so that we can make a sound decision.
All right. Thank you, Dominga. Anyone else want to add on to that? All right, Laura, go right ahead.
Let me unmute myself real quick. Um, yeah, I think that, um, you know, I, I try and compromise when, when I can. I feel like most of the council members that, um, are currently seated are the same way. I mean, there's a lot of things that we don't always agree on, but we do usually come up with a compromise. And on those few instances that we don't, um, you know, for the most part, we've been able to say, you know what? I disagree with you. I respect, you know, your right to your opinion. And, um, you know, I still can, I enjoy working with you. And it hasn't, um, it, you know, it hasn't been an issue.
All right. Thank you, Laura. Anybody else? All right. Got one more question. City council members, our public servants, name something you've done in the last year where you volunteered your time uh, to help people in Helena. Go ahead, Dominga. And then I'll follow up with you, Chris.
Okay. Well, one of the things that I do, uh, I saw a need at Helena High School was to, um, own their track and field team. And so I volunteer, um, there as a volunteer coach, um, for our girls. And just being able to give back to the school because what they have, you know, done so much for, uh, my daughters. So I felt the need to just definitely give back to them by helping out, uh, because, you know, school funding is short. Um, and then all two teachers are not experts in the field. So I definitely want to, um, offer my expertise in, in that. So just working with the kids, um, every day, um, we're out there, you know, a few hours and I work, uh, work with a couple, um, on Saturdays as well just so that they can get that, um, additional training. So, um, definitely just, uh, working with the kids in the community, uh, and being there for them, you know, just not just for sports, but being able to help, to help them achieve scholarships, um, as well so that they can continue their education.
Great. Thank you, Dominga. Chris, go right ahead.
Well, um, as I said in my opening comments, the last eight years I've spent as chairman of the beautification board for the city of Helena and Laura, uh, uh, here has been our liaison to the council, uh, during part of that time. And, you know, one of the things that we do is community education. We host the spring cleanup events, spring planting days. We plant those baskets. Those baskets aren't planted by professional plantsmen. They're planted by, uh, people that like us on this call. Our citizens rally around those tables and get their hands dirty and they plant those baskets. And people say, well, you know what? It's just flowers. Well, you know, the flowers translate into quality of life. They translate into increased property values. They translate into business moving into this town. People want to be around something that's beautiful. And I'll tell you, uh, not only that, but the, you know, a couple of years ago, uh, one of our other board members, uh, Brian Puck had brought up that why aren't we doing a Christmas tree lighting in the city of Helena? Uh, so we got to work planning and coordinating an annual Christmas tree lighting for the town. And I can tell you the last three years at Christmas, that just is sort of the kickoff event, you know, the day before the Christmas parade. Last year, we partnered with the business association and they did a wonderful job with, uh, with the holiday market on that evening. And, uh, you know, all of those things come together to enrich the quality of life that we all enjoy here at the city of Helena.
All right, Scott, go right ahead.
So I volunteer, uh, for the Buck Creek Festival. Just took that on this year. We started planning that in January. I'm also every Saturday morning from June to August, uh, I go to the amphitheater and we start setting up for the farmer's market at 5:30 in the morning until one o'clock. Uh, that's every Saturday, June, July and August. That planning starts in January as well. Uh, I also have helped with the HBA event for the Christmas lighting. Uh, one of the things that we were able to do and brought up for the farmer's market is we all know when COVID hit, we had that people were in need. Uh, I was able to get the farmers together and donate vegetables and fruits. And myself and my wife drove around and handed out vegetable and fruit boxes to 20 plus people. Uh, and that was all volunteered and donated from the farmers. Uh, and, and there's, there's more, there's more, but we'll, we'll let everybody else go.
Thank you, Scott. Who's next? Laura, go right ahead.
Yeah, um, as these guys have already mentioned, you know, I've, I've volunteered with the beautification board on planting days and cleanup days, spring and fall and winter and everything in between, and it's been an absolute joy. Um, I'm also with Scott on the Buck Creek Festival Committee and, uh, just really made me, made me glad that we could help keep that wonderful tradition alive, uh, here in the city of Helena. Um, as I mentioned before, I'm also serving on several other boards, um, here in Helena and Shelby County regionally. If you'd like, you know, a listing or to know more about that, you can visit my website. Um, I don't want to take up too much time because I know we're getting short. Um, but yes, I'm very involved in our community.
Thank you, Laura. Lee, go right ahead.
All right. Okay. Mine's kind of a little less traditional. Um, essentially, I, I, at this point in my life in Helena, it's a little more individualized in the sense that, you know, maybe, um, my daughter's soccer coach will ask us to do something and we'll serve the team that way. Um, so most of my volunteer work, and I see Dominga shaking her head. It's probably gets this, um, there, it's really directed specifically towards, um, the teachers or coaching staff that, um, that we're connected with through our, our daughter's sports and, um, and our son's, like, just their school. However, the thing I probably spend most of my extra time doing, and I do in, in Helena, is I do a ton of Bible studies and mentorship through our church. And that is a pretty non-traditional thing, but, um, it is extremely important to me. It's a priority to me as well as serving in the capacity of city council. Um, so that is really where I've poured a lot of my additional time over the last several years, not just this year. Um, but I really do try to invest in, um, building up leaders in, um, in teaching Bible studies and teaching small groups um, and pouring into them, um, and, and all of them. I specifically asked to work in Helena. Some of, uh, I'm pouring into the community that I live in and serve in. Um, so a little different answer, but that, that's where my heart is. Um, so that's, that's where I serve.
All right. Thank you, Lee. Tangi, go right ahead.
You know, this is the hardest for me because I'm a public person. The things I knew
Frozen.
by the grace of God first and, uh, out of a heart to serve. Um, but I'm, I'm very, you know, I, I love, like, I traveled globally, um, and the COVID was, but I've been in India on mid-trips and, and running Africa as well as, um, I'm involved with outreach programs. It's like this, um, help, uh, we just partner up with, with Aaron's program back school as well as do a lot of things that need people feeding on. We're like, we Thanksgiving, um, there is, we, we doing the Christmas winners and, and toys and the giveaway. In fact, we're doing right now, we're giving away, uh, we call scholarships for kids so that they have the clothing or the, um, the sun to buy a seat for schools, school size that will take care of needs. Um, but we also like purpose and turn it up with people that like remote calls such as, um, um, Red Cross or, uh, wheels on wheels, I serve there. Um, I'm a person love serve, like this, I enjoy the look, it comes serving most. That's like, but I do not publicize that because that's personal and people, it should need a company, you need something. So therefore, if you see know me, you know that I serve, welcome past, help this on, it's my ideas. Um, I'm just a person. That's what I love. That's my, really my passion. That's really my passion.
Thank you, Tangi. Anyone else want to add on? All right.
We, we do have some questions from, uh, pe- people who've been watching the watch party. I'd like for us to answer them. That means we'll go into overtime and Brian and Scott, hang tight. If y'all are okay with this. I kind of put you on the spot, didn't I? So, um, So um, do you want?
All right, super. Yeah, I'll go ahead and ask him. Uh, one of the questions, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pair two of them together. I think they kind of fit well. Um, one of the questions is, you know, what is your plan to preserve Helena's history? I mean, we've got a pretty rich history here. What's a plan to preserve that? And um, I think to pair that with, you know, the entertainment district motion just passed by the approval of the current council, what does that mean for Helena? How does that, how do we pervert, preserve history? And what does it mean for Old Town and our new entertainment district we're, we're looking into? Laura, go right ahead.
Yes, thank you so much.
You got it.
Yay! Um, what I would love to see is, um, a critical component of this entertainment district was the establishment of a board to kind of help with development in the Old Town Helena area. It was to kind of combine the Old Town Development Board with the Arts Council um, to assist with a placemaking initiative for Old Town. And I feel like by adding public art, um, that is reflective in nature of Helena's history, like maybe murals or some other kind of public art works of of some kind, you know, that would reflect our, our history, where we came from, where we're going. I would love, love to see that, um, especially in the Old Town Entertainment District. Um, something that would just tell a story visually of Helena and our history.
I love that, Laura. Thank you for sharing. Dominga, go right ahead.
Um, kind of adding to what Laura said, uh, she was saying, making it visual. I would like to see a documentary. Uh, we have older residents here that are able to kind of just give, give a story of how Helena was when they first arrived. Um, I think uh, a documentary will, will serve its purpose by uh, definitely including all, all those pictures that we do have, and the artifacts that we have, but making a, a live visual documentary.
All right, thank you, Dominga. Anyone else raise your hand? I thought I missed one. Lee, go ahead.
Y'all are completely frozen on my screen, and I can barely, like, there's just a little bit I can see. Is, can y'all see me and hear me okay?
Uh, we can see and hear you just fine.
Okay, okay. Um, can you repeat the first question for me, Joseph? Because I, I'm really like, I'm so sorry, I can't hear stuff.
That's fine. It says, what is your plan to preserve Helena's history? And then the second question was, the entertainment district motion just passed by the approval of the current council. What is, what does that mean for the city of Helena?
Okay, thank, thank you, sorry about that.
Yeah.
So I think it is important to preserve that um, area, and and I think that we will, we will do that without any, any problems. Um, I think the, it, it's a, it's a historical district that has some overlay zoning on it that really does protect it already. Um, so it, in and of itself, there is some protection mechanism already built in. Um, what I think this is going to do is enhance and add value for not only the business owners down there, but also our residents. Um, and I mentioned this last night, too. Um, this promotes and and really encourages that live, work, play lifestyle that people are looking for in their communities. Um, it also provides an opportunity for the, the citizens to, I'm sorry, the city to recruit and um, and retain additional businesses for economic development. Um, and then I love that this will also provide additional foot traffic um, as well as just awareness of what is already down there. Um, we have a lot of great shops, the teams, salons, Buck Creek Stained Glass. Uh, we have a lot of unique things down there. And I think this will actually help draw people in and keep them there. Um, and I think it will also, uh, I think what Laura mentioned in terms of the Art Council, this hot board, I think that there is a lot of potential to make this an incredibly um, unique and even really diverse uh, environment for our citizens. Um, I, I kind of see this as, as it continues to play out, being an um, kind of a destination for not only our residents, but hopefully people that live outside of Helena. Because it, there's, I mean, one of our jobs as a city council member is to find ways to uh, resource additional revenues um, in ways that have minimal impact on, you know, our, like, our personal pocketbooks, right? Look, so I think this does that. I think this creates an opportunity for increased revenues, and will draw traffic from outside um, Helena as well. And and that's something that we, we need. People already leave Helena, go to other towns. Thank, sorry, I can't see anything, so I'm terribly sorry.
No, 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 no.
Yeah, I apologize.
Now, last question for you, Scott. No, go ahead, Scott. I saw your hand come up.
I just, I just wanted to say real quick that we get family from Michigan, and they always want to come down, and they always want to see the dam. We think, oh, it's just a dam, but people from other states and other cities go, oh, that's a beautiful dam. We want to go down there, we want to take pictures. I think what people don't understand, I agree with this uh, entertainment district, but it's not just because of being able to have a drink from one establishment to another. What people got to understand is this is to promote Old Town and make Old Town better, prettier, uh, and 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 have the history come out more. And then I'll, I'll let.
All right, thank you, Scott. Chris, go right ahead.
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll sort of take these backwards, uh, than, in the question, the order that they were asked. But you know, I think this entertainment district is a big win for the city of Helena. I would love to, you know, we talk a lot about, the big focus this week is to ban on, you know, the, the alcohol aspect of that, and, but you know, one of the things that I love about this town is the entrepreneurial spirit of the people who live here. We have so many uh, folks who do things on the side, those craftsmen and artisans. And I'll tell you, we're only one generation away from, you know, woodworkers being gone, and people that do what I call the hand arts being gone. I would love to see our uh, some space dedicated to makers, to people who make things, and will bring um, the next generation along and teach them how to make things, too. I'd love to see a permanent art space in Old Town, so we can host art exhibits and expand our arts and and culture. You know, Mr. Penhale, Hal Woodman, um, have done such a good job with this historic preservation committee. And there's so much more that we could do if we get behind them and fund that, and um.
Perfect, thank you, Chris. Anyone else? All right, I've got one more que- oh, were you raising your hand, Tangi?
I was, but it's okay, you go ahead, next one.
Are you sure?
Okay, okay, okay. Well, um, all right. So my answer to your question is, I think that to serve um, Helena's street and the one we need to make sure that the history is documented, so uh, mayor out, museum is funding, um, that we have in Helena, make sure that when you go to uh, like, the different tourism, that they have, like, the bushel of a bell, talk about Hannah, so we part up with different um, uh, aspect, being able to put our, uh, community out in different parts of our community. Uh, for entertainment district concern, it, since the sin has already passed, but that's mean, that mean we have work um, ahead of us because, once again, I believe it may inform um, choice decisions and um, and choice. With that being stated, I think that since it is in existence now, we need to study more of the building up of their entertainment districts wants to have more successful, and the ones that have failed, we need to come together as a group, if they could, to create, and talk about how do we maintain what we would like to achieve, the entertainment district, the goals for its, um, goals would be. And I think we need to include some residents that are affected by that particular area in the conversations, they don't feel they're overlooked, but they're included in the city, well, included in conversation along the landowners and the businesses. So I think with the intensity, it could be, but we need, we have a lot of work ahead of us to really solve, especially with parking and things that are kind of table, going to be looked after the fact, so.
All right, thank you, Tangi. Janice, we have time for one more question. Can't hear you. Here she comes.
We are a little past seven, but I think, look.
I think it's an important question. Let's do it. Okay, so of course, we all knew this was going to come up. What are the plans for improving traffic efficiency in Helena and infrastructure? Um, what do you have to share on that? Everybody's got, uh, let's give everybody 60 seconds this time. How's that? Okay, who's first? Maybe they need 60 seconds to think. No, I'm just kidding.
I'll go first.
All right, Chris, thank you.
Yeah, well, you know, uh, first and foremost, I want everybody to realize that there's no magic remedy for traffic issues. Uh, no matter where you live in the state of Alabama or in the United States, unless you just live way out in the country, you're going to have some sort of traffic to contend with. We are a landlocked community that is um, largely reliant on state and county road systems. Uh, while those plans are in the works, they often get shifted, those priorities get shifted by those leaders, and we need a better seat at the table uh, to be able to say, Helena needs a roads wide, we need a bridge, we need this, we need that. So we need a voice at the table.
All right, thank you, Chris. Lee, you're up.
Can you hear me? I still can't see any of, any of this.
You're good.
Okay, 60 seconds is a really hard time to answer this question. Chris is right, there is no magic pill, or we would have done it. It is something that we hate just as much as you guys do. Ultimately, we do need a better seat at the table, but we also need, I think we need citizen advocacy. Um, I do not think this is a problem that your council or mayor alone will fix. Um, I think we are a integral part of it, and I am, I'm here for it. But I also would strongly advocate and recommend that you guys advocate for our city. Um, the more people that blow up their phones and blow up their email, um, it does cause us to get more attention. Um, I also strongly believe in continuing to approach this through our growth strategy, um, and asking developers to continue to add things that will help alleviate or, or assist in some manner. But this is a much more complex question than a 60-second answer, and I'm available anytime, 205-451-2955.
Write that down, write that down. All right.
Write it down.
Tag on that one. Laura, Laura, you ask her next, I'm sorry. Go right ahead, Laura.
All right, I'm going to try and make this pretty brief. You know, as they said, we, we can't do this ourselves. We're going to have to pa- to uh, to partner with our county and state folks on, um, you know, on our major thoroughfares. Now, I will say this, there are some great projects that are in the works. Um, it's going to be some headaches during the meantime, but, you know, if we can get them started, uh, I, I feel like they'll do great things for the city of Helena. But one thing that the city can do is to look into building and paving those previously approved connector roads. There are roads um, that would provide additional connectivity within the city of Helena, which is something that the city council and the mayor can do. Um, it's going to be very expensive, but I feel like it would really help uh, residents get from one part of town to another.
All right, thank you, Laura. Anyone else want to tag on to that? All right. All right, well, Janice May, I think that is the end of our discussion tonight. Guys, we're so thankful that you made time to join us tonight. Thank you, Janice May, for hosting and and putting this on and and bringing everyone together so that Helena could get to know their candidates. I'm so excited for each and every one of you, um, whether you get to serve on council or you get to continue to serve our city the way you are now. Um, it's been an honor to get to interview each of you tonight and just get to know a little bit about your hearts and your passion for our city. And I'm going to turn it over to Janice May to close us out.
So yes, thank you very much. Again, y'all are all amazing people, and I've, I'm really blessed to get to know all of you. So Helena, stay tuned for the mayoral candidates town hall, and be safe, be healthy, and be unusual until I see you in a couple of minutes. Bye, y'all.
See you, guys. Have a great night, everybody.